Okay.
You received that policy in error.
Because we just do it in procedure, we don't have any policy. Sorry, I was looking for the password.
Yes, please. I'll make a motion to accept.
There's a motion to accept the consent agenda? All those in favor?
Aye.
It's both. Carrie. Agenda preview and characterization. Visitors.
Me.
Me. You.
Heather?
Yep, we'll have discussion later, so.
She's actually an administrator now. Doesn't count as a visitor anymore.
Okay. So, leaps Heather Moore?
Yes, hi.
Hi Heather, I'm Andy Pahn.
Um, on to me, sorry, I was trying to get on to the internet.
We were having side conversations over here.
Sure, but I can do this. So, um, thank you for having me. I wanted to come to talk about one, I was here the last month or the month before, talking about how this is a new grant round for leaps. So this is year five of our current grant. So the application is due February first and that will fund us for, partially fund us for another five years. So there's a couple of changes that we wanted to make. One of them is, at the elementary level, the current leap site is we want to turn the site coordinator position into a hybrid position, which is 75% in leaps, so that's 30 hours a week working in leaps and 10 hours a week working for the school to be able to provide benefits for the position. So what, and Beth can talk a little more about that, but what it would look like is the coordinator would fill a need, a part-time need that the school would have. And then the general fund portion of our leaps budget would go up a little bit to match that. So just kind of looking at like a, just a movement of funds really. And Beth, you had talked about a use for Carrie for that.
I, I understand completely where Carrie is coming from because right now she works probably 50, 60 hours a week between her two positions. She's a great resource, I hate to, I hate to have her time reduced that much, but she is a trained RBT and so we could use her, I think, to cover lunches and breaks for all of our one-on-one paras. She's pretty skilled, so I see that being like the majority of, that's probably 10 hours right there.
So that's one of the big changes. We're looking into expanding the program by four weeks, which I talked about last time I was here. And so next month I'm working on a budget of like verifying exactly what the changes to the budget would be. I'm predicting about a $7,000 increase, but some of that is also just shifting from some of the school day, some of the funds that we're covering, some of Carrie's hours now for the school day into the 21(c)(1) funds so that we could cover her completely and give her benefits through 21(c). The other one is we've, I surveyed staff at the junior senior high school and I would like to open a site here if there's support from the school. Looks like, I had about 11 or 12 teachers say that they'd be interested in working in the program. Teachers were interested in their days throughout the week, Monday through Friday like the other sites. About 70% or so said that they, that they really think students would stay and participate. We already have students that stay after school for some other activities that are not currently funded by the school or any other program. So those kind of, I guess you could call them clubs, right?
They're clubs, yep.
They're clubs, yep. They could even be partnered in with the leaps program as a starting point. What this, one of the benefits of this has is we can expand what those programs are and have, that they can offer. And then includes summer programming for middle and high school students starting the next fiscal year.
So we currently have a gamers' club, there are two or three teachers who do that. Kyle Kramer, Ryan Bushy, two or three that do that. And then there's an artist and writers' club and that's a net going, Jay Farnum. And then Irene Rippon does an art night, I think twice a week. So all these people, well, a lot of it's volunteer time, about, part of it's contracted day and part of it is just time they volunteer with kids. And then Jay Farnum also does a workout club with a group of kids that are interested and he stays after school. So we have a variety of things that happen usually on Monday and Thursday night. My only concern is like we meet after school two nights a week, but there probably would be enough support staff, hopefully, or other people to run the clubs or run the activities on those nights. We also do a homework support thing every night that's funded through Gear Up. That's part of our Gear Up partnership, so.
So leaps could partner with what's already happening in schools. The Gear Up would be considered in-kind funding and match our program budget. When the teachers are using their contracted time running a club, that's also a match towards our program. And then either teachers can continue to volunteer their time or leaps could pay them. What's exciting about a new site is it gets, has the opportunity of 100% funding for the first three years and then it goes down to 75% for year four and 65% for year five. So it would be ideal to have a monetary contribution to begin with to show the readers of the grant application that the school is invested. And, but we can kind of, we can work around what that might look like too because we do have a lot of in-kind matches as well. Like I said, we wouldn't do summer programming this year, but what we're planning on doing for this summer is all middle school students are being, we're opening enrollment at the Ennisburg Middle High School to all middle school students for summer programming instead of developing summer programming at the elementary sites for elementary and middle school. What I'd like to do is if Richford had a, were a site, we would have both sites open up to any of the students so that going forward, middle school students from Montgomery, Bakersfield and Berkshire, thank you, would have the opportunity to choose which site that they'd want to do and then we could personalize the programming for Richford and Ennisburg as well. So that's part of the big plan.
Sounds good.
Okay, any like quest, more questions and details you are wondering about?
What would the monetary value be, you think, for us to invest into it?
Well, Richford for many years did 5,000 and they increased it to 10,000 for this school year. So I would say at the very least, starting with the 5,000. And then we'll also have the in-kind matching as well. Part of writing the grant is balancing, we can get 100% funding in theory, but there's not enough money available to fund every project that's being presented to the AOE right now. So the more that we can show a contribution and bring down our ask value, the greater chance we have of being funded fully. And when I say funded fully, we can get funded without question, funded with condition or not funded at all. Those are the three options for the answers from the AOE. Any other questions? So does, then, does the board approve me going forward with writing a junior senior high?
Does it look like that's something that will work?
Well, $5,000 isn't much in the grand scheme of the budget. So I wonder about the possibility of using consolidated federal program allocation money for that. Is that a possibility? Or like if we, we do our homework club, that would be part of it probably out of Gear Up. Is it, is that allowable or not allowable?
That is.
It's allowable if, if it's for licensed teachers.
Right, well Gear Up doesn't, yeah. Gear Up doesn't even have to if we're using Gear Up funds for that.
For CFP it has to be.
For CFP it does. So, so I don't know if we would need to put it in the regular budget or if we could do it out of some other grant funding.
The one risk to that is you know how the push-pull is on the consolidated federal grants. We could do that, but then if we don't get the funding at that level, we'd have to find it at the, if we write it in, we'd have to find it out of the local budget.
Well Gear Up was just funded for seven years and we're Gear Up school.
Good.
But so that.
I'm saying the consolidated federal grant part.
Right, consolidated.
But we can use other sources for matching.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, we were using CFP funds in a lot, yeah, but.
There's just more restrictions on how to use those.
Right.
So do we need a motion for board approval for this?
No.
Okay, just support.
Just a direction.
Yeah, support. Um, I, one other follow-up question. I was not intending to include busing as part of the leaps. There's, the Ennisburg site does have busing. None of the other sites do. It's, we're, it's been pretty successful at the other sites to not have busing. For the most part, parents are there at five to pick up, pick up their children. It's a huge expense, but if it's a barrier to people coming here, that would be a good reason to add it in.
No, I don't see a bussin'.
It works without it, man. I think it's worked without it. So.
Yeah. Okay. Excellent.
I just want to compliment Heather, she's been very diligent. This is, she's new and this is a huge undertaking when you write the new grant and I think she's been very thorough trying to learn all the new communities and writing the grants. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
So I'll be back next month with the actual budgets.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Kaylin?
I wonder, Andy, if you might want to consider taking your visitor out of order since this is a budget night. She's going to be here a while if she waits until the last part.
Would you like this to?
Sure. I've got a big pot of cheddar cheese.
You didn't bring it with you?
I didn't.
Okay, Suzy, so we've been getting emails about this Act 46, potential of joining a lawsuit against the state. Just, I want to hear more personally from you and discussion of the board on how to go about this, do we want to or not, so.
So you asked, you know, if I'd be able to answer any questions, so I'm not sure where your questions are. I did reach out to Dave Kelly, who's one of the attorneys. I do have a list of people who have joined the legal action and right now it's Huntington, Dummerston, Newberry, Barnard, Wyndham, Montgomery, Westminster, Berlin, Callis, Middlesex, Sheldon, Highgate, Franklin, Brighton, Charleston, Holland, Derby, Troy, Jay, Westfield. And I think this is a little dated, I think this week, Stan, Stanford, Stanford something, is there a little town? There's a couple towns down there that even though you're not necessarily being forced to merge, they're joining to support your neighbors who are being, yeah, Standard, there's a name, Standard Greensboro, I think. Anyways, so basically they have, I got some additional stuff the other day to ask questions. They have, so they're going to finalize the plan any day now. And the appeal has to be filed within 30 days of the final plan. The initial list of issues, districts who've joined to vote that having common is delegation of power. And I can give you this, immediate irreparable harm, loss of small school grants is a situation for some schools and that's why they're joining, taking on debt, which would apply to you. And the alternative governance process, the AOE rejected the AGR route. And it will be funded by, they've got volunteer pro bono hours by seven lawyers, paid attorneys at reduced rates, Alliance for Vermont School Board Members, Act 46 Defense Fund is submitting money, private donations directly to attorneys. And additional costs would be covered by school districts who raise fund locally, costs would be shared proportionally based on student enrollment. They have the lead attorney is Dave Kelly, I've met him a couple times over the course of the last couple of years. Can't remember which district he's from, but they have a number of attorneys here who will be doing pro bono and then there'll be additional attorneys who are doing pro bono for like X amount of hours per week and over that they're going to charge 140 per hour. So my thought is that it's, you're not going to get attorneys any more well-priced than that. Generally they don't, but anyways, they do have a sheet to follow and, you know, there's no, no hiding my thoughts on it, but I think you're, you're dealing with a community that has voted no twice. I think you definitely need to discuss it, I think you need to go on record voting one way or the other on this. And personally, I feel like you, you're going to be forced to merge, so what do you have to lose?
Right.
And do I know what great chances they have? I don't. You know, there's been a number of things questioned over time. We do have some attorneys who are working on it, so they obviously feel it has some merit. But, you know, depending whether a judge would see it that way or not, I don't know. And, and the AOE, the SBE has been all over the board in their decisions. There's not necessarily been consistency in some of their thought processes, so. I mean, I don't know what questions you would have of me, but I've been forwarding you some of the stuff that I have. I've not, I forwarded it to Ennisburg as well, but their community voted it no and yes. And I don't know if they discussed it at that, at the Ennisburg board level at all. So, other than if they wanted to join to support you, I don't foresee them taking that step. You have the different situation where you are taking on debt and you do have a community who's expressed it twice in a certain manner, so.
And if we didn't join and the state made a ruling one way or another, so say they made a ruling to
Right.
hold it up.
Right.
But we didn't join the lawsuit, would we reap the reward?
I don't know, you know, that's a good question.
You would still be held up, from my understanding. So if an injunction happens, I think this is what is being sought in the lawsuit is an injunction that gets this case heard in front of a judge to stop the forward movement of the forced merge. So that would be for everyone, is the way I understand.
Okay.
It's a little unclear whether everyone would include Bakersfield and Berkshire, which voted in.
They voted yes.
It would depend on what parts of the law are considered.
So that's not an enforceable merge? Because they voted yes.
But it was done under Act 46, so.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. And you could argue the nuance on whether they were under oppression and voted that way or not, but, yeah. I think the, the thing about joining is certainly a bigger number of schools on board with the suit certainly does help them take it seriously.
Right.
And it dilutes the cost for everyone as well. I know that they have raised, I was thinking today, I should have figured out how many, how much funds they've raised, but they've raised substantially, continuing to raise funds, so.
Other than potential legal costs, what are some other disadvantages of joining it? And what would be the process if we chose to join, what would be like the process to get?
So I don't think there's a punitive, you know, oh, you joined the lawsuit, so the state punishes you somehow. I don't think there's any of that and you have that legal right to do that. So, I mean, if anybody can think of anything, I couldn't think of anything that way. And the process to join is they have a form that they want the board chair to sign. And the questions they ask are just logistics, pretty much. You'd be executing this on behalf of chair of the board. Some select boards, did Montgomery's select board join?
Yeah, that's what I was going to mention.
Yeah.
So I think, I might be wrong on this, but my understanding is that these suits aren't being funded by school districts as much as they are by their local communities. So in Montgomery, they chose to join, the select board has agreed to pay to fund it so that it's not coming away from students in the school budget. And I think, I think I heard, Morgan, tell me if you heard something different. I think I heard Mary say at the Montgomery meeting is that they're encouraging people to not take this expense for the suit out of school district money. I thought I heard that, could be wrong.
It does say no individual school board or select board is asked to guarantee that any part of these bills get paid. We're asking that appellate plaintiffs and their supporters do the best to make contributions to the defense fund. So how much they're going to hold you to any type of bill is, sounds kind of ambiguous. And I don't know whether these attorneys, I know one of them would probably just, I think he's doing all pro bono. So I'm not sure how that sugars off, so there is that little bit of, but they're not putting real strong language in here either. So I, it leads me to think, if the letters attach the minutes and get it to them and they're looking for responses now, because they have to file within 30 days of, probably next week. Do we know when that?
It'll be the 20, between the 28th and the 30th.
Yeah, so this lawsuit goes forward, but 30 days after that. And I can give you that, Andy, I can give you all of this. What was the other questions, was that the process, any other negative consequence?
I haven't got anybody to think of. So where would the money come from if we were to join and, I mean, if we didn't take it out of the school budget?
Well, you have, I don't know, do the individual boards have a line for attorney costs?
Everyone has a legal line.
So you have a legal line where you could pull some from a legal line. And the FNESU has a line, but that would be for the FNESU as a whole. And I guess you could always request support from your select board if it comes to that. I'm thinking that the people involved have other avenues as well that they're going to look at for fundraising, different groups that support democratic process and that type of thing because I feel that's part of the, part of the angst is the disregard to votes as well, so. I suspect there might be some nonprofit groups that will help fund as well. Those are quite a long list of names there, so I'm not, you know, I'm not trying to be overly optimistic, but I really don't see a big, big bill coming forward. And many people are, many of the attorneys are doing it strictly unconscious because they just don't think it's right, so.
I know a lot of the folks in the community have expressed concerns about the budget piece of it, like taking on debt, even though, you know, we would explain that if we were to merge, that we would be sharing debt down the road and it could help down the road, but still people are very, feel strongly about the debt piece of it.
I think there's a lot of questions still, I, as a Ennisburg person, I'm questioning, you know, what happens to the property acquisition fund. I mean, there's, I think there's a lot of unanswered questions, how that merge will sugar off and, you know. And I agree, you know, at some point, you know, this school will need something and you'd be sharing the costs. That's down the line, that happens, but I know that that's been an issue and you've heard them speak.
So I guess we're going to need to figure out how, well, hear from the board, how does everyone feel on it? Going forward with something like this or not going forward.
Have you been hearing lots of?
Not a lot lately, but I know we were out.
Right, right. I was going to say, I haven't heard anything lately, but I know that in the past that was the big concern about
Right, at vote time, that was the concern.
taking on debt, I think that's the biggest.
You know, the past two weeks, three weeks, since the announcements of the tentative merge, I've heard none personally.
I know, which I would have thought, maybe there would have been more.
People I've heard from have kind of like thrown up their hands, like.
It's like a done.
They're not happy, they don't agree, but they're kind of like.
All through that process, all those meetings we had, they were not well-attended.
They're not, they're not well-attended. What sticks with me is one resident saying, we won't agree to it, we'll just deal with what the state gives us.
Yeah.
And like if that's the mindset of, I mean, it's, I know it was only one person, but it was one person that came out of four people from Richford or whatever it was that night. It's like, if that's really your mindset, then you don't care either way.
And the people that I knew that really cared didn't even, didn't show up. I think they cared a lot, they talked amongst themselves and they voted accordingly, but they didn't feel like, I think there's an apathy that no matter what they say, nobody's listening, it's not going to change, so.
And it was nine votes, the last one. That was the difference in Richford versus, a yes or a no vote was whatever, I think it was nine votes, seven or nine votes.
I was going to say, I was thinking it was seven.
It wasn't a resounding, one way or the other.
Right.
To me, I, I agree with this, but the unknown of, are we going to get a bill for $18,000? Or are we going to get a bill for $800?
It's a financial burden, you don't.
That I don't know of, you know, the unknown, when, we can sit back and ride on the coattails and we're going to reap the reward either way, right?
Well, is that pretty fair?
No, but, just thinking out loud, I guess.
Yeah.
Well, I'm, I'm in support of joining it, I feel we have nothing to lose, I would be in support of joining it mostly.
I am too. Actually, I am too.
Well, I think that since the vote was negative both times, that since we are elected officials of the board, that we
Represent.
Represent Richford and we should go by what those votes were.
The votes of the voters, yeah.
Do you have any interest in speaking with your select board to see if they would like to help fund part of this?
I can bring it up to see.
Well, I know how much some of them are against it.
We don't know, but we could at least bring it up that there's a possibility of a rule that there could be a need for.
Yeah.
I can find out how much they have, send that information to you and where they're going forward, but I think right now, time is at the essence, I don't know when your select board meets again and if that's going to hinge your.
Tonight.
Tonight.
Okay. Do you want me to go there and then?
You can if you would like.
Get the soup on the back, Mark.
You've got time to go home, eat your soup and be back to you at seven o'clock.
So we have another community who has taken a similar vote. So there is a little more than just that, that one piece of paper. There's also additional information that they require to join.
Called the template, I couldn't find it.
Yes, okay. So there's information that you'll need from Morgan. Most likely he can give you most of this information and if you're going to approve this tonight, my gut tells me you should give Andy permission to sign away from the table because that one form that I think I saw you hand him requires the board chair's signature.
Yes.
And this one just requires identification of a contact person. I mean, there's a lot of other stuff too, but that's the one you have to sign. Unless you all want an emergency meeting to come back.
Only if it's Thursday.
So what we need to do is give him permission to sign away.
We need to make a motion.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
The board made a motion to authorize Andy to sign on to join the Act 46 lawsuit away from the table. It's okay.
I'll let them know. Thank you. Good luck and if it comes to any fundraising that needs to be done, I won't disappear.
I'll buy lottery tickets between now and then.
That's true. Well, good luck. Well, good luck.
All right. Have a nice Thanksgiving, everybody.
Thanks. Thanks for coming.
Thanks for.
I know, I'm killing y'all with emails, but, yeah, maybe when you're lounging around with a cup of coffee, you can read through some. Thank you.
Okay, Lynn, back to you.
Right. So personnel, nothing. Student, nothing. Negotiations update. So we have had our second council meeting. It's just the Board members' meeting to just tune into, uh, kinda goals for the negotiation process we are working through, because we have. We're anticipating that Sheldon will be a part of our negotiation this round. We're still waiting on the final plan from the state, but if that happens, there's gonna be space for Sheldon on the teacher's side as well as the, as the Board's side, so we're, we're making space for that. We're not really beginning with, um, actual negotiations with teachers until the final plan drops, because it just, it seems wrong to do any of that before Sheldon is at the table, if they might be a part of it. So hopefully, more to come at the December meeting.
Morgan, have you decided on when that meeting is? I know you sent out the poll, but.
I don't, I've only heard from maybe five people.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, administrative negotiations, last time we met, we talked about Mahew and McGraw, both have accepted. Okay. Next up, I wanna talk about, uh, Richmond School Leadership Model. I'm gonna slide those down.
No, I just don't want to spill on your computer.
So, I'm gonna go through this with you. Um, tonight, I'm gonna share a plan with you about a new leadership model for the Richmond Schools. When you see the budget tonight, you're gonna see that there's an additional principal for the elementary school that is included. My request is that the Board agree to fund this position, and before we do that, I want to take the opportunity to review the evolution of the shared leadership model that we have had in place at both Richmond Elementary and Richmond Junior/Senior High School for the past three years. So in two thousand sixteen-seventeen, Beth was hired to become your full-time, um, building principal. Sorry, lost my line. She, at the, at the elementary school, sorry. She was assigned to be the building principal, uh, and a full-time assistant principal was hired to manage the day-to-day responsibilities down at the elementary school. In seventeen-eighteen, the assistant principal did not return. A shared leadership model was developed. Several people were given stipends for additional day-to-day responsibilities. In eighteen-nineteen, uh, the shared leadership model has Lori McGraw assigned to many leadership responsibilities in the school and Michelle Weed is assigned responsibility for school discipline issues. And then just looking at the high school, in fifteen-sixteen, Beth was hired as the principal of Richmond Junior/Senior High School. Uh, also that year, Robert Fair was hired as the assistant principal for the high school. So for the past, um, three years, Beth O'Brien has graciously served in the capacity of building principal for both, uh, the, I'm sorry, for the Richmond Junior/Senior High School since July of two thousand fifteen. In the spring of two thousand sixteen, the elementary principal position opened. Mrs. O'Brien was approached about filling the role at the elementary school and she initially declined. The Board and administration had a search process to fill the vacancy. When the Board determined that they had not found the match they were looking for, then Superintendent Jay Nichols again approached Mrs. O'Brien about becoming the building principal of the elementary school. Mrs. O'Brien agreed to do so with the understanding that a full-time assistant principal would, would be hired resulting in a shared leadership model. Over the course of the last three school years, there have been a variety of shared leadership models utilized. Beth has done an outstanding job of trying to balance the needs of both schools and the associated demands of being a principal of two buildings and four hundred and twenty-plus students. She has managed to split her time between the two schools and has done her best to attend to the needs of students, teachers, parents, and community in both schools. However, with more than two hundred students in each building, there's plenty of responsibility for a building principal in each of these schools. Some noteworthy accomplishments that I want to highlight. I want to take a moment to recognize a few of those accomplishments. During the past three years, Richmond Schools have developed under Beth's leadership, a pre-K-12 continuous improvement plan, common discipline procedures in both schools, flexible utilization of resources and personnel, common professional learning opportunities, a shared pre-K-12 technology, food service manager, and facility management. I have the utmost respect for Mrs. O'Brien and the time and effort she has put into continuously improving both schools. I know a few leaders who would have been willing to take this responsibility on and who could have done this work at the level that Beth has performed. Last spring, Mrs. O'Brien informed the Board this would be the last year with the current leadership model. Given the increasing demands associated with school leadership, especially at the high school level, it's essential that Beth is able to give her undivided attention to the leadership of Richmond Junior/Senior High School. It's also time to hire a leader at the elementary school who can give his or her undivided attention to the students, the staff, and the leadership of the Richmond Elementary School. Beth and I went through this process, uh, and developed this model plan together. So moving forward at the high school, I would like Beth to be considered the lead principal. I would like Robert Fair to continue on as the, um, Dean of Students or potentially Assistant Principal. Would like to hire a principal for the elementary school while still embracing the notion that these are two buildings that we want to function as one system. The goal would be to hire a building principal for Richmond Elementary with the skills and characteristics necessary to be a successful leader in the Richmond School District Leadership Model. The successful candidate will need to be collaborative, focused on continuous improvement, a strong instructional leader, a flexible thinker, and have the ability to work collaboratively for the good of the whole system and community. So for job descriptions, um, FNESU job description for principal, which I had intended to attach, and I couldn't readily find one when I had a moment to stop at the office, so I will send that to you. The difference between a principal and a lead principal is the following. As the lead principal, Beth would have additional job responsibilities. She would have all the responsibilities of a principal. And in addition, she would be responsible for pre-K-12 building and grounds, pre-K-12 food service, technology, and transportation. She would mentor the elementary principal for two years. She would work with, um, the business manager to coordinate local budget development and management. She would collaborate with the pre-K-five principal to identify needs and allow for input. She would, uh, collaborate with the business manager to identify also pre-K through five and six through twelve specific spending lines. She would also be responsibl, responsible for coordinating consolidated federal grants, pre-K through twelve, collaborating with the pre-K-five principal. She would be responsible for the coordination of continuous improvement plan development in collaboration with the pre-K-five principal. By statute, the superintendent is required to nominate a candidate for employment by the school district if the position is required to be licensed. So my plan is to open up a comprehensive search process in late January or early February to look for, um, the best match to fill the principal role at Richmond Elementary. Questions do you have?
So if you were to hire for this position, it would be more or less not as the principal's role in the past, or? Cause it looks like Beth's still gonna be.
It would be, they would be, they would have some autonomy for decision-making at the elementary school. However, Beth would keep several of the centralized functions that I outlined on that list. So that we can continue to, to work on the efficiencies that she's been able to identify and work to improve since she's been here. So the person would still be a principal. They just would not be dealing with building and ground functions, anything to do with food service, technology, or transportation. And they also would have less responsibility in terms of budget and grant management.
So, um, I just wanna say that my first year here noticed that the hot lunch situation didn't improve with the budget, because nobody took responsibility for any of those people or any of those programs. And so really, um, when we, the budget went down and things got better, it was when I was principal of both, because I think nobody know. It wasn't clearly defined who was supervising any of those employees or any, so therefore, I wonder if no one did. Well, I, we certainly didn't do it closely, but I was only here one year before that.
Right.
But like, uh, for instance, um, we use, we just had a big restorative practices training, um, and the high school had some improvement money, but we were able to include everybody. So it's just, um, wise to use your resources in a way to benefit all the school, all the kids in the S U and all the staff in the S U.
Now, what about, um, Michelle or Lori, since they've already been doing some of those? Would they be, do either of them have principal endorsements?
I wanna be careful about talking too openly about individuals, but I, I wanna just talk about if there were a strong internal candidate who may per se be close to getting an endorsement.
Right.
I think it's important for that person to go through a search process, because I think you don't wanna give your stakeholders, I mean, let's face it, this job is really hard. When you're leading an elementary school, you don't want anyone to look at this and say they didn't look for a qualified candidate, they gave the position to someone. So I think that if you did have a candidate in your building who was really qualified, they're gonna naturally have some advantage in the process. And I, and I think that's important for their future success to do it this way.
And I disagree. I feel that we, we looked three years ago and we couldn't find anybody that matched the needs of this community. And, um, I reluctantly took it on and have been developing intentional leadership capacity in people, um, in, in both schools. And I feel that if somebody shows that kind of loyalty and initiative, because one person has stepped up to get their license, not because they would go to be principal somewhere else, but because they're dedicated to this school district, that they're, they're, when they're loyal to you, then I think that we should be loyal to them. But that's where we differ. We don't have the same opinion on that.
So I know, and we've, we've talked about this quite a lot, that Beth has a strong opinion about appointment versus hiring. And I really think that there's a difference between, like, when Beth came to become the principal, she was appointed. She came on with leadership, um, experience behind her. And she had served as a, as a building principal. I have extreme confidence in the people who are down at that building who might be looking at this role. I fear that by doing this, we would disadvantage them moving forward, and I, and I just don't think it's, I don't think it's fair. I think that, um, you want that person to go into the role with the community and the stakeholders saying she was the best candidate for the role, that's why.
Go through the fair process.
What's that?
Go through the fair process.
Right. So I just don't wanna. If this person is the right candidate, they'll shine in the process.
Yes.
Because they're gonna know the system, know the stakeholders, and I think that, you know, they should, should definitely be given that opportunity to go through the process. I just think that we shouldn't do anything that, um, makes it harder for someone starting out. And I feel strongly that this would.
So you're gonna, you're going to post that when?
I think late January or early February makes the most sense. We, February first is when, um, you start to see some administration movement in the state. So I was thinking of trying to get it posted the middle of January, so people are starting to look at it and then take a look and see what kind of candidates we're getting and set up a process that begins in February.
I didn't know if you'd start sooner. That was awesome.
So when's the end timeline to figure out who will take this position?
I would hope early March.
Early March.
Again, I, I'm a big believer in making sure that you, it's important to go slow to go fast, right? Like you, you don't wanna rush through a process and not be thorough. I'm looking at this as an opportunity to, um, thoroughly vet whoever is applying, to have a search committee, to do some site visits of your finalists, to, to do, um, a community meet and greet, so I would expect that the process would take some time to do this. And then I think whoever is selected, the community can be confident that this was the best match for the school.
Under responsibilities for the lead, it says mentor, mentor the two years. After the two years, does that mean they just, no more mentoring, but the other responsibilities of it all, all the other lists would stay there?
I think that you're naturally gonna have a mentoring relationship between the two anyway. I just put two years, that's generally when someone's starting in a new role. You have a mentor that follows you for the, your first two years. It's a little more formal in those first couple of years. I think that Beth and I probably both still have mentors that we use and have used throughout our career and will continue to reach out to, to no matter how long we've been doing this.
The reason I've stayed in the role as long as I have is to build capacity, but also there are some things that are true benefits to the, uh, like now, we are at the point where we're gonna have one postage machine. We pay a lot of money in a lease for a postage machine every month. If we have a one-on-one para whose kid is out and we don't need anybody here, Jane automatically calls the elementary school. They automatically call the high school now. I mean, there's so many efficiencies that are in place that never were, I, I could, we've hired, we've added Jeremy Sanborn at the elementary school, who is a wonderful resource. And we now have a middle school, um, guidance person focusing on middle school, um, using our consolidated federal programs for the home, that role, the homeschool coordinator. But we had to share the resources in order to do that. So there's so many things that we do that benefit both schools and all the kids. And that really makes, um, our use of all of our resources much more efficient, that I'm worried about losing. Um, I don't wanna lose those things.
It should be cohesive then.
Right, you have to be a cohesive unit.
I think having the, the lead principal, you've got the experience here and being able to, to explain how, how those things have worked, I think will be helpful for whoever is in that role. The expectation is that they would continue to find those ways to, to be efficient between the two schools. But it would allow for full-time focus in both buildings, so someone that, the buck stops with that person that's in the school all of the time. Any other questions? I would ask that the Board go into executive to talk about personnel, and this should be really short.
I will make a motion to enter executive for personnel.
A second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Could I ask everybody to go?
Make a motion to accept the resolution. For appreciation for Beth O'Brien. A second.
As we voted.
As we, oh, as, yeah, as we discussed in executive session. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it.
So, there's, the Board just voted to adopt a resolution of appreciation for Beth O'Brien, and at this time, they're going to read the resolution.
Okay, in recognition and profound appreciation of distinguished service by Beth F. O'Brien. Whereas Beth F. O'Brien has worked tirelessly and provided outstanding leadership and guidance to both the students and staff at the Richmond Elementary School and the Richmond Junior/Senior High School. Whereas Beth F. O'Brien has faithfully and with honor, loyalty, integrity, and distinction served both roles for three years. Whereas Beth F. O'Brien has served as a champion for the children of Richmond and has made her community proud. Resolved that the Richmond Town School District Board of Directors formally, formally acknowledges and extends its profound appreciation to Beth F. O'Brien for her three years of service as the principal of both the Richmond Elementary School and Richmond Junior/Senior High School. We, the undersigned, hereby certify that the Richmond Town School. We, the undersigned, hereby certify that the Richford Town School District Board of Directors is comprised of five board members, of whom five constituting a quorum, were present at a meeting duly and regularly called, notice convened, and held this 19th day of November 2018.
Two fingers on the pad.
We, I read me the undersigned. We, the undersigned, hereby certify that the Richford Town School District Board of Directors is comprised of five board members, of whom five constituting a quorum, were present at a meeting duly and regularly called, notice convened, and held this 19th day of November 2018. And that the foregoing resolution was duly adopted at said meeting by the affirmative vote of five members and opposed by zero members. And that said resolution has been duly recorded in the minutes and is in full force and effect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Realizing I forgot to print something, so I'm going to come back to Sback assessment results because my friend Jane is going to help me out in just a minute, right?
Sure.
Okay. So we can, maybe I can come back to it at the end. So I want to give just a little bit of information about school safety. We have on December 18th at 6:30, I say that without confidence because we keep moving the time of that meeting. We have an SU meeting at Ennisburg. And we have, let me just double check. Yes. 6:30, SU meeting, December 18th. Rob Evans, our Vermont School Safety Liaison, is going to be joining us. He, I've asked him to come and speak with us around school safety, like, best practices and spending around school safety. Because I know that last year, we had a school safety grant come up, and we had very little time to write the grant and plan for how we were going to spend that money. So I want us to be prepared if there's another grant opportunity that comes up, I kind of want to have a prioritized list of best practices and things we should be thinking about doing within our buildings to keep our, our students and staff as safe as, as possible. So Rob is the expert in our state, and he's done a phenomenal job of supporting all of us leaders in, in our Vermont's public schools. So he has agreed to come out and do that. I know that some schools are using some local money as well, and we thought as while we're in the local budgeting process, it makes sense for all board members to hear. So the SU board members will be present, but I wanted to invite all of you to that as well.
So I just want to say, the magnets that are holding the doors open now, that's something we've done here at the high school, that, that's one of the things we use the money on, because you can leave the doors locked. And if, you go into lockdown, you can push the button, they automatically release and the doors are locked. We have those at the elementary school, but we didn't have them at all of the rooms here. So that's just one, one of the things we're doing.
Is that the same thing, Beth, as the, the mechanisms that release automatically for fire alarms?
Yes.
Okay.
Same thing.
Maglock? Is that what they're called?
Yeah, I don't know what they're called.
Something like that. Okay. So we're just going to be looking for, if there's another grant that comes up, what's our plan, what's in the queue for us, so that we're not scrambling, I'm not knowing what makes sense, because everybody has a different opinion. We're SRO officers, metal detectors, right? Like, all those things, and not all of those are best practices. So we just want to make sure we're prepared. So I keep putting Act 46 statewide plan update on the agendas, and eventually, I'm going to be able to say we have a statewide plan. So Morgan and I, I thought we would hear about it last week. I thought we would, on the 15th, learn what the plan was. He didn't, he was right, it pains me to say that. But we're going to know next week, there's no leeway. They had, their last state board meeting is November 28th, and they're required by statute to have the final ruling by the 30th. So I expect, because it's a public meeting and everything has been completely out in the open, we're all going to know, we might not have it physically in hand and writing until the 30th, but we're going to know what the decisions are at that meeting. So we should talk a little bit about timeline in board membership. I think those were the two things. Can I have that sheet again? Thank you. I cheat sheet. So board membership, they have not finalized their articles, their draft articles of agreement yet. We, I don't think they have, although we didn't actually see the minutes. Yeah, I don't know if they're out yet. The last version of the articles of agreement that we saw, I tipped you guys last time, that whoever was serving as chair and clerk as of July 1, are the members of the new merged transition board, okay? So when Morgan and I looked at that a few months ago, we realized, what if, what if a board somewhere has someone that doesn't want to serve on the new board, or they've moved, or they're, they're no longer, whoever was the chair at that time is no longer on the board for whatever reason. So we just wanted them to put a provision in place so that if there became a vacancy on that transition board, that you had a way to fill it. Because what you don't want to do is have, you're going to end up with a four-member board, two for Ennisburg and two for Richford. It's going to be pretty important that you have that representation. You don't want to have, one town only have one board member as you're going through that transition process. So Morgan is going to talk a little bit around the transition and budget timeline to pull together and still try to get a budget before our voters for town meeting. So I'm going to turn it over to you.
So as far as we know, this transitional board is going to be formed with those default articles. The transitional board only has two functions. One is to start work on the budget, and the second one is to call a vote of the larger district where you can elect the permanent members of that new district board. And you can also revise the default articles if you want. So in Ennisburg and Richford, that transitional board might get together and say, we want to go with the articles that we presented a year ago in the state. The, the transitional board does not have the authority to warn a budget. So that has to be done by these new officially elected members. We sent a timeline off to your lawyer, it was last week. We haven't seen any feedback yet, so we're going to keep having to push these dates out. But basically, we need to have a 30-day warning for the organizational meeting of this transition board. That board, at that first meeting, could call for a vote for seats for the new board. And we think we could get it to a town meeting day budget vote, but it's like a window of maybe a few days if we have enough time to pull that off. So once the lawyer says that that's an okay thing to do, we will ask the secretary to warn that organizational meeting, and we're just going to be presenting dates to you and saying this is the only way to, to pull that off. If, if that doesn't happen, I think what we would be looking at is that on town meeting day, your new board would be elected, and then they would immediately have to warn a budget vote, which would take place in April.
So how would you, first option, how would you elect the new board members?
So I believe initially, it would be by Australian ballot, and it would be across both towns, so.
But it would, it'd be a special vote in January?
Well, it would either be a special vote in January for the seats and a town meeting day vote for the budget.
Right.
Or a town meeting day vote for the seats and a special.
Yep.
Good, good question. The other way that this would maybe flounder is that we're sort of assuming that, you know, the transitional board will be doing this work, and the full boards will be backing them up, and will have gone through, you know, two drafts of your budget by then anyway. You know, I'm assuming that there's not going to be a big push for, for these seats on the permanent board. But you could, in theory, get four people that nobody's ever heard of. And if that's the case, I would doubt they're going to rubber stamp a budget that they haven't even seen yet. So even if we do that pretty aggressive timeline, depending on who's elected, we may still not be able to pull off a town meeting night budget vote. I think that's it for the timeline.
I don't think so. Anyone have any questions? One thing I guess I would want to just throw out there and add, I know earlier in the meeting, Suzie talked about the Act 46 lawsuit. So you do have another community in our supervisory union who's voted to join the lawsuit, and that's Montgomery. So if you had specific questions, Andy, Mary Niles could give you some information around that. She's the board chair in Montgomery.
Okay.
That's the only other thing I will say about Act 46. And I'm going to come back to Sback assessment results at the end.
I don't know, my next?
Yep.
Financial update came in your packets. We have not seen a draft of the FY18 audit for Richford. I did get a draft of the supervisory union budget, and there were no findings there. I was hoping that we'd have it by your meeting, guessing that with, with the Thanksgiving vacation and break, we probably won't see it until at least a week from now. And none of the town audits have started trickling back in yet. Coming around is your first look at the budgets. Draft one is the purple copy. And I ran out of purple paper, so that's right. This, this first packet is your detailed budget. And so if the merger does go through and the lawsuit does not delay implementation, we will be presenting to voters a combined Ennisburg-Richford budget. The way we're dealing with the uncertainty is I'm, I'm working with Ennisburg on my budget separately from you guys working on your budget. At some point, I'm going to merge them, and I'm going to just try to pull out the very easy duplication that I can find. But we're not really putting in a lot of effort yet to find any sort of savings through merger. Do that through the budget development process of the next round. The version in front of you is still missing some pretty significant chunks of money. The SU assessment and the special ed assessment has not been brought in yet. If there are any teachers that we're paying out of the SU because they're grant-funded or special ed-funded and then billing back a portion, they're not in here yet. I'm saying that to, to all the towns, although I think for you guys, there's nobody in that category. And I haven't done a real close look at early ed yet. The, you don't pay tuition for any kids, but you get a tuition bill for the Volk Center, and that's not in there yet either. That's something that we'll get from the state in December. So we can kind of do a speed run through the detail, I'll point out some highlights. Beth and I have been doing this over the last week or so, and there's a lot more cleaning up that we're going to go back and do, generally lines where we see a big move, we kind of start asking each other questions. So, so this will change between now and December, whether you give us any marching orders to change or not. On page one, the first big section there at the bottom is the school directors. There's some insurances in here, your legal fees. I've not made any changes to that, basically just rolled that over from the prior year. This is where we're going to see a little bit of savings through the merger, and probably one of the few areas I'm going to be able to pull it out really easily. On page two, that first half are for SU assessments, and you don't have anything there yet. And then, starting on page two is the elementary instructional section. There are some big changes on health insurance, and I'm going to walk you through that later on in the budget where it's a little easier to explain. But you'll see in that first line, for elementary teachers, there's an increase of 1.0 FTE. And what that is, is a juggle of two staff between title funds and your local budget. So when we warned your budget last year, we basically had a full-time person split between the elementary school guidance and high school guidance. That person is being paid out of title funds, and in lieu of that, you're paying for a halftime literacy interventionist and a halftime math time interventionist.
Coach.
Coach.
Coaches.
Out of your local budget. So we basically did a whole person-to-person switch, and you'll see as we go later on in the budget, this 1.0 is offset.
And we did that intentionally because the, because the consolidated federal programs allocation and guidelines are changing all the time. And it was harder to fund our coaches using that money, and it was easier to fund like a homeschool coordinator or somebody to help with the implementation of the sort of practices. And so a lot of what Alyssa Valander was doing, or we were planning for her to do, fit right into the consolidated federal grant. So we just did like a, a change.
Elementary school budget continues on page three. There are no real other programmatic changes here. If you look at line two on page three, you'll see a big drop in tuition reimbursement. You'll see changes everywhere throughout the budget. What I've done through the negotiations preparation process is to look over past history and see how much we're actually spending, and I've just taken an average across the SU. And, and that's now tied to the FTEs of teachers. Bottom of page three is your elementary school co-curricular budget. No real significant changes there. Page four is the after-school program. We basically level funded that for the elementary school. If you guys want to give me guidance on different numbers, given the conversation here earlier with Heather, I'll do that.
So was she asking for an additional $5,000 or just $5,000?
I think she was saying that you could, if you wanted to, put in $5,000 for the high, for the second site in case the high school site goes, gets approved. But that would be under the high school portion of the budget. But, but like I said, we might be able to use different funds for that, like gear up and, you know.
And the records should show that she would be happy to take additional local funding from anyone. And she's making that request with all the. Page four, the main section in there is the guidance for the elementary school. So you see on that first line, that's the first drop of a halftime FTE. The other change is on line two, you'll see we had .2 of a SAP counselor at the elementary school. We've reduced that to zero, and we've moved that fully into the secondary budget, which is really more reflective of her time. It was split, I believe, historically because of the work she did with sixth graders was in this part of the budget, but you've moved that.
Right. They.
So she won't be at the elementary school anymore?
She hasn't been since Alyssa.
Oh, she hasn't?
No. So since Alyssa is working with, I mean, the real point of that was to, you know, develop resiliency skills, but it was also to help with transition.
Right.
And so since Alyssa's there, not halftime, but she's there working with fourth and fifth graders a lot, Lisa stays up here.
Oh, makes sense.
No other real changes there. Health starts on page four, the very bottom goes to page five. No, no real changes there. Second half of page five are your regular ed, elementary school, parent educators. You will see overall. You will see overall in this budget, an increase, I think it was four and a half. And that's one area where Beth and I are drilling down and making sure that we need all those positions for next year. The other thing you'll see in all of the paraeducator lines are these little fractions of people moving from one part of the budget to the other. Anybody who does any work in special ed has to do a time study twice a year, where they basically record their time for two weeks, and then we change how we pay them based on that. So a lot of the budget-to-budget changes for paras is more about them moving back and forth between regular ed and special ed and early ed, depending on their caseload.
Can I just say something about that?
Yep.
So Morgan said an increase of four and a half. And that may be correct, or we're going to look at that. But I know that at the high school, we have an increase of two paras. One was a student who moved from another town here that needs a one-on-one para all the time. And one was a student who had a BI in the past from NCSS. So in theory, that should reduce our SU.
Counters.
Yeah, the amount we're charged from the SU. Because, but it's not going to show up like that. It isn't like apples to apples, because special ed paras are funded out of the regular budget, out of our budget, local budget, and BI's are funded out of.
SUs.
If they're special ed students, are funded out of the SU. So we will be assessed for that. So while we don't really have an increase in personnel, it's still the same amount of people. Well, except for the one student who moved in. But like, even though we're showing an increase, we have a new one-on-one in the early ed. So that, and that student needs a one-on-one too. So that's why. Some of these, some of the expenses, because of the way we're funding now at the SU level, they don't show up exactly the way they used to. So I just wanted to explain that. Is that a good way of saying it?
That's a good way of saying it. And the other thing to keep in mind is that the increase here is budget-to-budget. So we're looking at.
Right.
A snapshot in time now versus what our best guess was the first week of January.
Yeah.
It may not reflect who's actually in your building, because if those kids had moved in over the summer or at the end of the school year, we already brought them on as staff. Page six is the elementary librarian. No change there, but if you look at the third and fourth line on that section, third one is health insurance, fourth one is HSA. You'll see that the health insurance premium dropped by 2,600, and the HSA amount went up by 3,000. The change really is that last year, we budgeted the premium and the HSA all on that third line. And so we're now breaking them out as we're coding them differently for the state. So you'll see that, you know, overall, the health insurance package went up $400, but there's movement between the two lines. And so you'll see it's, again, the elementary school, it's a much bigger swing because we're dealing with more people. Bottom of page six is the tech budget, and that goes on to page seven. No personnel or real programmatic changes there. Halfway through page seven, you'll see the addition of the principal at the elementary school. And then we're taking out that assistant principal halftime position on line three of that section. Increase in insurance because we're anticipating that person taking insurance. But other than that, there's no programmatic changes to that section of the budget. Page eight is your custodian. Plant line for the elementary school, no change in terms of FTE, but you've got a new director of buildings and grounds, so there's some money savings there.
So we, at the elementary school, under the repairs and maintenance line, we have redone all of the classrooms as far as the asbestos abatement. The last classrooms were done last year. The final steps are the tile in the gym, the hallway, and the main office area. So those are the last things we need to do. Morgan and I talked about it. We thought we would budget the same amount that's been budgeted the last several years. And when, once we get to that, we'll see how much we can do. We might be able to just do the gym, or we might be able to do, I think, once we start on the hallways, we're going to like do all the hallways in the office. But that's the last that we have to do. So we aren't sure if we can do all of the flooring next year with that amount of money or if it'll take two years. But there's other stuff that needs to be done down there anyway. I sent you an email that Gary, Gary sent an email before he left saying, "Don't forget a fuel tank, don't forget," like a few things. But we're hoping, I'm hoping that will do the asbestos abatement for the elementary. Have it all done, but I'm not positive.
Yeah, so that's the first line on page nine, and you'll see that the, that first column, the actual from last year was significantly higher. And that's because Beth tends to run her budgets very lean, and then we go on a spending spree at the end of the year to fix things.
Well, I get it approved. It's stuff we need. It's a good strategy.
Bottom of page nine is your special ed paras at the elementary school. So again, that increase of two FTE, Beth and I are going to drill into that and see how much of it is new kids coming in, if it's just the percentage changing.
I know one's early ed, but we'll look at it, yeah. Could be a percentage.
Or if I am in the wrong category. And that continues on to page 10. Middle of page 10 is the special ed assessment, which we don't have yet. Bottom of page 10 is your early ed, regular ed. So we've got a drop in .4 of a teacher, and I'm trying to remember what that was for.
For early ed?
I wonder if we've got somebody coded to special ed?
I don't know why.
So we'll look into that.
We'll look at that.
Again, I haven't really paid a lot of attention to early ed in anyone's budget yet. Page 11 is early ed, special ed. Suppose your paras, and that continues on to page 12. So we saw an actual decrease there. And then your early ed budget goes to the middle of page 12.
Did you say that you had an increase in early ed, special ed, paraeducators?
Right now, it's a decrease.
I just thought you had said earlier that you thought you had to add one. We do. That's why we need to look at the people. He might not have them coded to the right place. To the right, okay.
And then before we start on secondary, I just want to remind folks that we're negotiating for your, with your teachers for next year. We will be negotiating with your paras for next year. So I've built in an increase that I'm hoping is going to be enough for both of those folks as we get a little farther along in the negotiations process. And I see where that group thinks they're going to land, I may bring that up or bring that down. But it's really, at this point, just largely guesswork based on what we've seen for settlements in the past. I don't know if we're going to have solid numbers by January or even a solid guess, but I'm hoping that we'll at least feel like we're closer. And before you warn the budget, we'll just want to come, assuming that those aren't settled, we'll just want a number that you all and Beth are comfortable with. And we can talk about that in December as we get closer.
So.
Can I talk about?
Yeah, I want to talk about the teachers. There's an increase you'll notice in the secondary teacher line, because when, you'll remember when Doug McDonald retired and came back like halftime, we really were down a part of a math teacher that we haven't hired because our numbers were down at the high school level. Well, they're back up. And I'm going to be asking, I might as well ask you now. I'm going to be asking for permission, or am asking, to hire a .4 teacher for the remainder of the year. We actually had about $8,000 that, when we hired, the people we budgeted for and what the people actually cost was about $8,000 less than what we had budgeted. Hiring a .4 FTE for the rest of the year would cost us $17,000. And I'd like to hire Jen Gaffney, who is a teacher from Ennisburg, who's on leave, who took a leave for this year, who's willing to come back .4. She just let me know about 2:00. Because with our change in special educators, we have some that were duly licensed, that are no longer duly licensed, and we need, in order to fulfill our licensing requirement, have a little bit more of a math person. And we're able to do this if we hire Jen .4.
$9,000 there.
For this year, yes. And then we, what we did in this budget, you'll notice it's up, is we, Debbie Atherton has told me it's her last year. And we need a part of a math teacher. So we just budgeted for .7 FTE more of a teacher, because Debbie was like .3 or something like that. Debbie was .3 or is .3. So we figured we need a little bit more of a math teacher, so we budgeted for 1.0, I mean, .7 FTE more of a teacher for next year. Because Debbie's .3, and we made it a 1.0 position.
But it'll be a 1.0 math, Beth?
Well, maybe.
We're not sure yet.
Yeah, we aren't sure yet. I would like, Debbie, one of Debbie's classes that's most popular and that I think is like so needed is a financial literacy course for kids. It's the consumer economics that she teaches. So a family consumer teacher could teach that, or a math teacher could teach that. So we, we'll just have to look at what that looks like for next year. So just, I just wanted you to know what that increase was.
The secondary budget continues on to page 13, and we have, you'll see about halfway down, added just under $60,000 to the budget for an anticipated out-of-district placement for a kid who is not special ed eligible. And because they're not special ed, it's out of your local budget.
And we might be, we might know more about that, so we could leave it in or take it out. But for now, we put it in.
It's one of those things that we can, hopefully can take out at the last minute.
Yeah.
I must put, we're leaving it in there. For page 14, secondary continues on, and there's no other real changes there.
Yeah.
Page 15 is your high school co-curricular. We've got some things moving in terms of coaches' salaries, and Beth and I will drill down into this a little more closely before your December budget as well. Bottom of page 15 is the guidance at the secondary level. You'll see that we've taken that halftime person out of here as well. And then the second line in there is the bump up to full-time for the SAP counselor, which has just taken them from the elementary school. And then page 16 is primarily the benefits for you guys. Bottom of page 16 is the school nurse at the secondary school. No changes there. And then second half of page 17 are your regular ed, paraeducators at the high school level. And again, Beth and I'll drill down on this a little more closely in the next couple of weeks. Page 18 is your librarian. Leave it at 1.0, no other changes there. Page 19 is the remaining .8 FTE of your tech guy, and then some of the technology costs down below. Again, that's relatively flat. Bottom of page 19 is the principal's office up here. No changes in people, no real programmatic changes in there. Bottom of page 20 is plant at the high school level. Same number of people. Again, you've got a saving for that new hire for this year that we hadn't had in the budget yet. You'll see in the elementary and high school, we've also just basically brought your utilities costs over. At some point, I will do a quick run-through to make sure none of them are too low. And then if we need to look too high, that's where we'll go if we decide we need to bring the budget in lower. Page 22 is your school resource officer, and then your co-curricular transportation up top. And then the second half of that page is your special ed, paraeducators at the high school. And then page 23 will be the SU assessment for special ed.
So how does that work with the special educators? I thought that they were part of the assessment. They're not part of the assessment. How does that work?
Paraeducators are not.
I thought you said para or special. Are these teachers or paras?
Those are all paras.
Oh, those are paras, okay. That's what I thought.
So as usual, the big changes are always in terms of personnel. A lot of question marks on salaries. We think we have the rates in for health insurance and dental insurance. That will be finalized. We, of course, don't know who's changing plans mid-year, because they don't have to tell us. The risk in Richford, especially the elementary school, is that you've got all these folks who are potentially still on their parents' plan, and at some point, that ends and they come onto yours.
Yeah.
We've not really made any assumptions that anyone's going to take what they have otherwise. We can do that if we need to. But at this point, we're just bringing people over on what they've got now. And then I think we went over the personnel changes, was that swap from title to local budget for those three staff. Addition of a full person at the high school, and then a reduction of Deb Atherton's position. And then the rest of it is really paras. So I think I heard add $5,000 to the after-school program at the high school level.
That's my opinion. More $5,000.
Any other programmatic changes that you want us to model? Have a bunch more people? Get rid of a bunch of people?
You didn't hear me shake my head, I guess.
No, I didn't.
Okay, so coming around is a slightly different version of what I anticipate is going to go in your book. And just so you all know, I think I've had a, we've done a lot in the past in terms of drilling into the four drivers of the tax rate. So it's your budget, it's the yield, it's the equalized pupils, and it's the CLA. You don't control the CLA, you don't control the yield, and you don't control the equalized pupils. Looking just at enrollment. Looking just at enrollment, I think you may do better in terms of equalized pupils. The year that's coming on seems like it's bigger than the year that's coming off in their calculation. So that, I'm hoping will help you guys. The tax commissioner on December 1st is going to project a yield amount. And that is, has a pretty significant impact on whether your tax rate goes up or down. This is the first year in a few years that we haven't had a hole in the ed fund, which is good news because that will be more money going into the yield, which will drive your tax rate down. Nobody is in a position to make a prediction yet on where that's gonna go. But what I'm told is if they were in a position to make a prediction, it would be an increase of about 300 bucks, which will be a couple pennies, should be a couple pennies on the tax rate to the budget.
We'll get that in December, right?
December 1. So if you look at this budget, this is for the PK through 12 district combined, as, at least as we anticipated. I've not put in anything for FY18 actual yet, but I did go through and I took your budget and Ennisburg's budget and proposed in the FY19 budget. And then I've done that as well for the FY20 proposed. Ennisburg had their first look at the budget last week. And we'll be doing some tweaks from them. This is basically showing just what was presented to them, added to what's presented to you. Again, this is not gonna have the assessments and it's not gonna have the bill-backs from the SU. But other than that, it will be what it is going forward until those boards, you and Ennisburg, change it or if we get this transition board up and running, if they make changes to it. But I wanted you guys to get used to looking at a $17 million number. The five or the six that you guys usually see. And it's different for them as well. The way that the, we're being moved to a new chart of accounts at the state, which is the numbering system for all the expenses and stuff that you see on the warrants and on that detail page. I'm trying to get this to mirror where we're going for that. So you'll see showing pre-K first, elementary second, secondary third. Post-secondary is adult ed, which is a small program at Ennisburg, and then the district-wide section. So it's not really gonna be split out by building as much as by function going forward. Next month, I hope to have some sort of revenue and tax projections. We'll see if, um, if they are gonna meet their deadlines, which tend to be December 1st for the tax rate and then December 15th for a lot of the revenue and for equalized pupils. Given how short-staffed the agency is right now and how much they have on their plate with Act 46, I would not be surprised if they roll past some of those deadlines because they just don't have the manpower to do it, which will put off our ability to make decisions based on a tax rate or project a tax rate, push that off into January. Anything else?
No.
If you see anything that looks weird as you're looking this over during halftime over your Thanksgiving break, feel free to shoot me an email and I'll get back to you one day.
Sure. We get to it when?
One day.
Were you looking for Thursday night?
Yeah.
All that good email. All right, when?
Yes. So I'm just bringing ESPEC results to each of the schools this month. So what I've done is given you the ESPEC data for 2018 for both Richford Elementary, Richford Junior/Senior High School. Those are separated out. You'll see results for students in grades three through nine. And then you'll see FNESU overall results in kind of that third table. So I just wanna go over the coding. It's in the notes. So the green and red coding for school results is as compared to a Vermont average. So if the number is red, it's lower than the Vermont average. If it's green, it's higher than the Vermont average. So the, when you look at the change, see the change column, that's compared to last year's students in the same grade. So we're not comparing students to themselves. It's not a cohort of students that I'm reporting on here. It's how third graders last year, two years ago, did compared to third graders this last year. That's the change that you're looking at. Just overall, FNESU students scored at or above the state average in eight of 14 measures. FNESU students scored below state average in six of the 14 measures. And they stayed the same or increased in nine of the 12 measures.
Any questions?
Forget what, what's ELA?
English Language Arts. It's a lot of data to digest. So if you, if you look at this and you have questions later, you can, you can call Beth or you can call, you can call me to talk to you.
I went over our data last June. I don't know if you remember.
I don't remember. I have it in my November notes.
Because they lift the embargo, they lifted the embargo right before our board meeting. So I presented our data last June.
This is your first look at any sort of comparative? Because we weren't able to release anything.
And I'm not, we talked about the elementary school, first-year teachers almost in every role. I'm hoping for an increase in the scores as they become more, you know, experienced teachers. I was, the, the middle school, um, two years ago, we had a huge, we had a really huge increase in the math scores. And the ELA had gone down. And we talked about the minutes of instruction for kids. Remember, at the elementary school, they have like, um, hundred, you know, well over 100 minutes, 90 to 100 minutes of instruction in reading and, and writing. And then we, we cut it down to like 45. So we, this year, we've made a correction in that. Last year, we made a correction and our ELA scores went up. This year, I'm hoping we adjusted our schedule again and we, we're hoping they're gonna go up again. I'm proud of our ninth grade scores. Our ninth grade scores are just about right at the state average. They're just a little, little tiny bit below the state average. 2% in both. Three, no, three in ELA, two in that.
All I have, I am officially done.
So I have the basketball coaches for the winter sports on there. Jocelyn Basset and Tara Bosley both stepped up and said the middle school girls would really like the dance team. And they had volunteered to read that. So we're gonna be adding that this year. We also had a group of kids that asked about a bowling team. It's gonna be a club your first year, so we're starting a bowling club. We're looking for a, a coach or a leader of that club, if you know anybody who's interested.
Well, no, I'm not interested in coaching. I just saw you catch my eye. But Ennisburg has a bowling team. They're now considered varsity. So maybe it's something that, you know, we could talk about, whether or not you guys could travel with them or, you know, there's a coaching opportunity there.
We're gonna start, we're gonna just start it as a club this year.
Yeah, that's awesome.
But we do travel a lot.
I think you would still compete though against those same teams, right?
Yeah, I think we'll compete, yeah, yeah, I think so. Um, I already talked to you about the math teacher. There's some dates in here for upcoming events. Or actually, two of them just went by. I added on the Veterans Day reception. I thought it was very nice. The National Honor Society did a reception for veterans. They did a great job. It was a student-led ceremony. And we had our induction ceremony on Thursday, last Thursday. Two of our students have been, um, will be recognized at the State House in January as presidential scholars, James Clausen and Hannah Hertzbees. So we just got that email on Thursday. Lot of good news about our kids lately. I have attached the class size report. I think it's clear. I don't know if anybody had any questions. I, I struggle with how to present the data at the high school level. So I decided to do it with a range of enrollment and then the reasons why. And I told you last year, we used to have, when I started as principal here, there were six periods in a day and kids could earn six credits in a year. Now they can earn eight. So you're spreading the students out over more options. And our higher-level math classes are small in number, but they're, they're bigger than they used to be, which is, makes me happy. We're trying to get more kids feeling like they can take the challenge or want to. But a lot of it depends upon where they're going post-high school, so. So I don't know if you have any questions about that.
What was the email you sent us about the elementary schools? Was it stormwater?
So the stormwater, um, I, the state is working with each select board in each community about state wa- uh, stormwater. They reached out to me saying that the elementary school has two, like, is it locations where they would like to study the stormwater if the grant is approved. But you, it depends on if they're getting the funding from the state level or not. But they wondered if we would be agreeable to that, studying the site. I said we would, you know, they, it's, the funding would be provided if they proceed with it. There is an educational component as well. They would work with different students at the elementary school on the project and they would have part in it, so. But that, right now, that's, they don't know if we're gonna get funding, but they did include it in the grant.
Okay, so I just clicked with me something about it. I couldn't remember the details of it and if it was going to cost us money.
I wanted to do a shout-out to Todd Marlowe. I don't know if you guys noticed as you were coming up here, but the Student Council has done a food drive for the past two or three years in the month of November. And they do a competition. They got enough food, I thought it was for 40 families. It's 30 families, 30 turkeys, 30 complete meals. And then Todd went and bought the rest. Different staff members gave him money. And the snow day on Thursday, he was, on Friday, he was here and he and Hannah and I carried all the boxes from his room down to the cafeteria. And he left in service a half hour early and he coordinates with Notch. And we, he came and loaded all of the things in the back of his pickup and they were copier boxes with a cover on them and a complete turkey, a turkey meal.
All the fixers, right?
Turkey dinner. And he was handing them out from the back of his truck down in the parking lot at Notch. And Todd does a lot of extra things for the community. So I, I just thought that was really nice that he did that. And I wanted to talk to you about the windows. I sent you an email about the windows. So we did, or Jerry, did contact Black River Design. And Black River Design was reaching out to the Historical Society to see about our proposal and to see about doing those two windows, the two arch windows, out of a different material and if it would be allowed. So we haven't heard back from them yet.
Have you heard from them?
No, but it's the Department of Historical Preservation.
Oh, sorry.
The Historical Society.
Yes, you're right.
Society says?
Yes.
The other one we gotta follow.
So that's all I have.
Okay. Anything else? Want to do a jury? Second? Second?